Can you check, Maria? Here we are. Yes, we are. Good. Good evening and welcome to the Ordinance Subcommittee. Today is Thursday, May 25, 2017. Members are present. My vice chair, Nilka Álvarez Rodríguez, and city council, Giovanni Rodríguez. Counselor, can I get a motion to take Document 19817 out of order?
So moved.
Taken.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 19817 is director of the Bellevue Cemetery Ordinance from the new position, Nicholas Caloflis, chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the Subcommittee. And I appear to you tonight. My name is Nicholas Caloflis, chairman of the Bellevue. And my residence is 35 Main Street in Lawrence, Mass. And this evening, I also would like to introduce one of our board members, Kate Darwin, from South Lawrence. And I come before you this evening to seek to create a new ordinance for the Bellevue Cemetery to oversee the administration of the Bellevue and its compliance with municipal and state regulations. I would like to present also with an ordinance, and I believe you have the ordinance in front of you, and that ordinance for the position drafted by our city attorney, Charles Barty. And this is based on a description created with the impact input of the personnel director, Frank Bonet. The Bellevue Board of Directors hope that you will consider it favorably and refer it back to the full council with your recommendation. And with that, I ask you, if there's any questions, we'll be here for you, Kate and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rodríguez.
We all know, former city-
Say again.
Former city councillor-
Oh, yes.
Nicholas Caloflis-
Many years, yeah.
-in this chamber.
Thank you.
We practically lived here for a period of time. I just have a few questions. Right now, the way that the staffing is designed is to have a superintendent, right?
Yes. Acting superintendent right now.
An acting superintendent?
Right, yes.
Okay. And that's because you lost the last one and you were searching for superintendent?
It's a complicated situation there, but the mayor appointed an actor, a city acting superintendent.
Did you say it's a non-paid?
I'm sorry, counselor, I can't hear you.
Did you say that the acoustics are really bad? They say we have something to help, but I don't know where it is. I'm asking if the acting superintendent is paid for their services?
Yes.
Is he or she? Why don't you come up to Kate?
Maybe she can hear a little bit better than I can.
Okay. Now, the, you want to replace the superintendent with a director?
No, no. This is a brand-new title, to be a cemetery service director. As I stated earlier, this will be the oversee the administration of the Bellevue Board and its compliance with municipal and state regulations, something that the current superintendent cannot do.
Why?
Not familiar with the regulations and statutes and so forth? He's only been there a short period of time.
Been there a short period of time?
We need a professional, counselor.
Right.
We need a professional. Listen-
So you want to, okay.
I just want to-
Are you keeping a superintendent? You keeping that position along with the director?
Yeah, that's not being removed. And it's in this thing here, the ordinance. However, the situation is that the, no one's going to lose the job. This is a brand-new position.
Right.
And this position, counselors, is for a creation of a professional cemetery where we can try to, over the years, for the past years that I've been on, and under the last lifetime member on the board, and for this time that we want to try to get self-sustaining on this Bellevue Board of Cemetery. And only with a professional individual that has the qualities and the enthusiasm to work, to build this into a self-sustaining corporation that it should be.
Right. So I guess, Counselor Caloflis, what I'm thinking is, have you met with the mayor on this?
Yes, we have.
Has he agreed?
The mayor has suggested that to us and-
You would have to allocate the money.
Well, that's the question. We hope that we can get together with the money part of it, with the mayor. I don't know where we stand on the budget, but we'll be talking to the mayor again. I did have a meeting with the mayor, and he did think it's a great idea to become self-sustaining in this particular, we got 120 acres, and we got a plan, because in years to come, counselors, there's going to be no room at the Bellevue Cemetery unless we obtain some land in that area. And there is some land.
We need someone with the expertise to help you put that plan in place. Now, I understood that, and I think that's a great strategy. What I'm not too clear on is if we will be paying both for a superintendent and a director, and if that's true-
It's not a director, it's a service director for the overseeing of the Bellevue Cemetery, the administration.
You want an administrative director was what you told me, right?
Right, exactly.
An strong administrator.
Yes.
Okay. And I understand that we have all these problems facing us in the very near future, you know, lack of space, et cetera. But the superintendent, I thought, was supposed to be doing that kind of work.
Well, yeah, and, wait, Kate?
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you, counselors. So the superintendent, currently we have an acting superintendent up there who's doing a great job trying to get everything ready for Monday, hope to see you all at Memorial Day. But if you look at the charter, the ordinance for the superintendent role, it's really primarily, for lack of a better word, almost like a working foreman. They're out there, they're mowing the lawn, they're, you know, getting the contractors into help, directing, the volunteers. There's not really any time left to deal with the overall plan, the administration grants. We're on the federal register, the National Federal Register. And the acting superintendent, doing a great job, wants to paint the garage doors. Whoa, all of a sudden, we're on the National Federal Register. There's a process and approvals, you only can do certain things. So these are the type of administrative things that frankly, the superintendent position has never really handled. They've done more of the hands-on, out there doing the beautification that you see.
Hands-on supervision, more of the practical pieces.
Yes.
But you-
The hands-ons.
Right. You need someone with imagination that can help you come up with ways to deal with the problems that the cemetery faces.
Yeah, in addition, things like applying and writing for grants.
Right.
That's a specific talent that not everybody has, and the current superintendent, great guy, very hard worker in the acting role, but doesn't have that ability, nor did any of the previous, because it was never done. And that's what we find ourselves in now, 120 acres, a beautiful historic cemetery that needs a lot.
Yeah. Kate, I don't know if I left mine inside the ordinance itself. Do you know, you worked, your commission worked directly with Frank Bonet, right?
We started with the draft. Director Bonet provided us with a draft of this position that he had created several years ago, because apparently before my time, there was a need back then, but it never went anywhere. So between that draft, other pieces submitted by the previous chair-
The board.
-board members, we took bits and pieces and crafted this one.
And crafted this one, okay. And the non-union grade level nine, do you have what the actual dollars are?
120,000.
You got it?
I know that's all the department head director level grades. And we haven't done any budgeting yet, because we were told the first thing was we needed to create the ordinance. That's the first step, so that's why we're here.
Right. But also, if we take a look also at the range and the salary ranges, et cetera, and, you know, I would think that if you're looking for someone that is business-minded, administrative, and for that salary, I would think you would want someone with a master's degree and not just a bachelor's degree. Or if they have a bachelor's degree, they should have 10, 12 years' experience. I think 120,000 for these minimal requirements or qualifications. These qualifications are not enough to justify a salary of 120,000.
Yeah, we could put a number of years on it.
Put a number, yeah.
But it's-
Right. Okay. We would have to, we're going to invite Frank Bonet to come to-
Invite who?
Frank Bonet.
Frank Bonet.
To come to the next ordinance meeting?
Okay.
He provided what some of the input here.
Right, and then we could work-
Some of this and some of that.
We could work within on this, okay? And I know that you guys have desperately been asking for help for a very long time now. So I'm very happy to hear that, you know, that you're taking these steps moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, no, thank you, Counselor Rodríguez.
I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you both of you for serving on that board. That board is extremely important for the community. I just wondering, the main point of this position is to have an administrator on board, right?
Yes.
So I remember that last year, we have, we actually allocate some money to have two more new positions that go to the cemetery, right? On the budget?
Probably the fiscal year, we will have two additional employees.
Yes. So basically, what I'm wondering, is the board looking to restructure the whole cemetery department in terms of positions, or just want to add a new position now?
We would like to add the position, if it's possible, as soon as possible. In the new fiscal year, it could happen, or it could happen in the second half of the fiscal year.
So because what I'm thinking, and this is just my thought, that instead of creating a new position, why don't we restructure the position that are there and maybe add a lower position, not a director, and have the superintendent to do the actual technical work instead of physical work?
That's primarily what the superintendent's role does. It does the technical, it's out there on the 120 acres, making sure they have the right equipment, directing the laborers, getting the physical, the physical work done.
It's more like a foreman or a laborer.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying. So why don't we restructure that and have the superintendent to do what you guys are looking for, instead of creating a new position, which is a possibility maybe? Or you guys prefer, the board prefer to have just a new position and leave it like it is with the superintendent? I don't know, what's the salary of the superintendent right now?
Yeah, and the superintendent currently, the superintendent is a union position?
Yes.
It's in the supervisors' union? I forget the union number.
He's a supervisor?
Yep.
It's about a grade, probably grade eight.
This position is a non-union-
Is a non-union exempt position.
So the older one, probably like a grade A if it is a supervisor. So that means 95,000.
The position we're seeking would be non-union.
If it is a grade A, and then that's up to 95,000. If it is grade nine, it's up to 120,000.
It won't be that much.
I don't think-
That's what I'm saying. So basically, what I'm trying to get is like, perhaps, instead of creating a new position, restructure the whole organization and have the current superintendent with the current salary, probably a non-union position, get it out of the union, and work with that, but it's up to the board. I just, this is just my thought.
And that's some of what this is. To take though, a current union position and take it out of the union is much more complex and complicated than creating the new position for the specific duties it's going to do. And I'm not saying that the board has made any decisions on, as you put it, counsel, the full organization.
We're creating an ordinance, yes.
That's one of the, that's one of the criteria that we'd like this new person to do, to have that experience and look at the 120 acres, what the status we're in, what's available, to make recommendations back to the board on what makes sense for staffing. Because for years, we've all said we're understaffed, as you correctly pointed out.
Yes, and like we discussed there last year.
There'll be a few more laborers collecting postings now for a maintenance worker currently.
So, okay, what I'm, I agree with Counselor Alarch Nilka Álvarez Rodríguez in terms of having Frank Bonet out here. What I would also would like to actually maybe send notifications to Bonet is to bring, to bring all the documentation in terms of people that are working there and to take a look at the entire organization, not just one position.
That's in your current budget of fiscal 18?
Yes, yes. It's coming up on the budget. But I mean, in terms of-
Just a chart?
Just a chart of the cemetery, in terms of who does what, and then probably we can see the entire organization instead of just one position.
He would have all the job descriptions-
Yes.
-of the existing roles.
And counselors, let me just add that the fact of the matter is, we're in the 21st century, and the Bellevue Cemetery is in the 19th century still.
Yes.
As far as planning and development.
Yes.
And in order to be self-sustaining, and I go back to a number of counselors, even before when I was on the board, that it was always a problem. When you go back to the years of the, when there was a strong-fisted Board of Directors, and the city council would recommend to the Board of Directors that we want some land, we want you to sell some land to St. Mary's Church. And the Board of Directors talked with the city councilors, it was Alderman at the time. This is going back into the 50s, 60s, only the history that I've read. And they had a lot of people there, working. And what they suggested, the Board of Directors, it was just headlines, and I looked in the Tribune, and you could see, tonight's the vote. How are they going to vote, the Board of Directors? How are they going to vote to the Alderman? Who's going to win? That's what it was, just politics in those days.
Yes.
And you know what happened? The Board of Directors said, we need the land, we cannot sell it to the church. And that was it. They were the strong part. I just want to add one point here. As I mentioned, we're into the 21st century, we need planning and development in that, and we want to utilize this new position. Utilize this position to the fact that someday, the thing is, what do you call it, cremation. At one time, we had a cremation plot up there. Oh, we can look at different things to make self-sustaining commence. And that's what we've got to do. And a superintendent versus a service administrator, director, is something that I think is going to be sorely needed, to have that vision, to look forward to making Bellevue Cemetery not the historical place because of its topography in the area, but to create a new vision of the 21st century and on. That's what we need. And only with the progressive attitude of the Board of Directors that we have, that we can do this.
Yes, I agree with you.
We can do it in the years to come.
Okay. Thank you. Before we call the motion, let me just wrap it up and say thank you both for being here. I think, you know, that's a great idea for you guys to take a step forward. But as you, Mr. Caloflis, being part of this, you know there is a lot of clarification, that we need a lot of information in order for us to move forward. So you know that sometime, you know, take longer, sometime it doesn't need to take time. But at this time, unfortunately, we need more information in order for us just to proceed. So I think what is fair is just to make a motion.
I move that we invite Director Frank Bonet to the next ordinance meeting. And that he provide us, in the letter that we sent out to him, that he provide us with a chart of all the employees, the staffing.
And job description for each one?
And job description.
And job descriptions.
And thank you for being here. The motion has been made.
A second motion?
Properly second. All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Way pressured to have you here.
Thank you.
Counselor, in motion, can I get a motion to table, document 19817?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, counselors. Counselor, can I get a motion to take document 20317 out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 203 is a transfer rental license. It has been put on the agenda by Antonio Javier. Counselor, this is a renew. We haven't seen Mr. Javier for quite a few years. All the papers and sign-offs are in order. Can I get a motion to send it with favorable recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to take document 204, transfer rental license, that also has been put on the agenda by Jose Rodríguez? Motion to take it out of table, out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. That is also a renew. All the papers are in orders, sign off. Unless you have any question, can I get a motion to send it with a favorable recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You all said. Okay. Can I get a motion to take document 18817 out of order?
So moved.
Giovanni?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 188 is also ice cream transfer rental license that has been put on the agenda by Ricardo Senquino. It's also a renew. All the papers in orders. Unless you have any question, can I get a motion to send it with favorable recommendation?
Motion to send it with a favorable recommendation-
Second.
-and discussion.
On discussion. Second with discussion, Counselor.
Yeah, it's Ricardo?
Ricardo Senquino, he's on the back seat.
Senquino.
Yep, he's sitting on the back. So-
No, no, mañana.
For the full council. Tiene que venir el martes.
No, el seis.
Yes.
Just want to ask you, you know about not taking the ice cream truck inside, like Campeñón Park?
Yes, I don't do that area. I don't do the area that is in the park.
Oh, which area you go?
I do Mount Vernon area, I do South Lawrence, and I do downtown, I have a license from Methuen, and I do Methuen area crossing over. I don't do the center, that I hear that you have a problem with that truck.
We've had problems in the past with that.
Yeah, on the common park.
Yeah, and that I know of, you haven't, you know, no one's said anything about you, and this is not the first time you're doing this, right?
No, I've been in the business over 25 years. I've been in the business a long time.
Well, thank you for your business. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So motion to send it with favorable recommendation has been made, properly second. All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You also need to come back next June 6.
Thank you.
For the final approval.
Okay.
Tuesday. Can I get a motion to take document 17917?
So moved.
Out of order? Can I hear a second?
A second?
Can we go to the top of the agenda?
The reason that I'm going, taking document out of order is because some of the applicants are not present, and I have to be respectful of the time for the people who are here. That is my only reason to take it out of order.
So do you second or no? No second? Okay.
Okay. So document 217, thank you, Counselor Rodríguez, and thank you for being respectful for the people who are in the item. Document 217 is a resolution for the top of Lawrence- No one is, I'm going back to the top of the agenda. Would you want me to do that, right?
217, yes.
Yes. Resolution for the top of Lawrence graduation following school, Lawrence High School, Notre Dame, Cristo Rey, Central Catholic High School, Greater Lawrence Technical School, and Ordinance Community College. Counselor President, I mean Vice President, he asked me to take all the items before this one, because he wants to be present. So I guess what we have to do is-
Motion to table.
Motion to table, he's going to be present tonight.
Yeah, we can take it out of table.
So we could hold on to it?
That is the reason.
Why you did the others, okay.
So, yeah.
Motion to table. Right on 217.
A second?
Motion to table, document 2.
We'll take it out again.
The next document is 178-17. Motion to table has been made. Properly second. All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to reset for two minutes?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
A moment.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 178-17 is a handicap parking on 38 Newton Street that has been put on the agenda by Mercedes Valde. Can I get a motion to send the item to offices, Callan?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table, document 178.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 179-17 is a Bread and Roses Heritage Committee request to use the component common commentary on the strike on 1912 on Labor Day weekend, September 4, 2017, from 11:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That has been put on the agenda by Gladys Sanchez.
Hi, good evening, y'all. My name is Gladys Sanchez and I'm the President of the Board of the Bread and Roses Heritage Committee. And I live on 83 Fartley Street.
Okay. That's going to be for the Labor Weekend.
So, questions?
Counselor Alvarez.
We do this every year where your group organizes this event every year and it's a really important one. Could you just perhaps talk a little bit about the event?
Sure. So we, this is our 33rd Annual Bread and Roses Festival.
33rd?
33rd. So the Bread and Roses Committee was incorporated in 1986. And since then, we produce a festival every year on Labor Day. So this year's festival is on September 4, from 12 to 5. And we commemorate the Bread and Roses Strike of 1912 with a full day of music, of theater, art, ethnic food, vendors, free trolley rides, and many other activities, including the Lawrence History Live tent, where speakers and writers and representatives from unions come and give their insight about the historical pieces of the Bread and Roses Strike and also some of the new struggles of today's workers. So we are in full swing planning this year's festival and we hope that we get approved one more year.
It's so important, I believe, because there seems to be a movement not to support the formation of unions or even to, trying to disband unions. And it's a good idea to remind people that working together, a lot can be achieved.
Right. So the legacy of the strike is really cooperation among immigrant workers and immigrant groups. And this year, every year, we try to highlight a different aspect of the strike. And is, this year, we are highlighting our immigrant spirit. So it is very important for us as a community to have such a venue every year on Labor Day, not just to commemorate our history and what happened in 1912, but how it's connected to today's Lawrence.
My, how, what is the impact?
Right.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other question?
Sure. I'll answer to you.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes. Thank you for doing that. Last year, it was a great event. You guys are basically doing this event to make people aware of what happened in 1912, right? And you have food and all that, right? Okay. And in terms of the food vendors, what do you guys do with that? Can you explain a little bit in terms of, in terms of that specific item? And if you're looking for vendors, how they can get in touch with you?
Right. So we have food vendors and non-food vendors. So the food vendor, we have an application that is available on our website, breadandrosesheritage.org. And vendors fill out a internal festival application and do all the process through the city. And every year, we have between five and seven local food vendors. So if anybody is interested, they can go to the website and the packet is available online. Or they can contact me directly and, or visit the park, the Heritage State Park, 1 Jackson Street. And the vendor packets are also available there. The park is open every day from 9 to 4.
All right. Like, how many people you expecting?
Any given year, we have up to 5,000 people.
Up to 5,000 people. So it's maybe a good, maybe a good, maybe a good idea if people understand that 5,000 people are going to be going there and they can sell stuff.
Right. So.
No problem. Just want to point that out.
Sure. Thank you.
No more questions, Madam Chair?
Send my best to Linda and the whole gang.
Thank you.
Counselor, what's your motion?
I move that we send this up with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. You need to come back to our next city council meeting, which is going to be June 6 at 7. It's a Tuesday for the final approval. And thank you for being here this evening. Document 180-17 is Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal request to hold oppression, the word of God, at the corner of Newbury and Garden Street on June 19, June, July 24th, August 21st, corner of Chronic Park on June 26th, July 31st, August 28th, corner of Newbury in summer, and July 10th, and August 7th, and September 4th, at Connel South Common and South Union Street on July 17th and August 14th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Is anyone representing the church here this evening?
I argue that the Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal. I think we should table it.
Motion to table?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Can we also make another, or admin the motion to send correspondent to the applicants to?
Yes, to be here.
Yes, I take them.
That's a good idea.
Maria, you got that? Document 181-17 is a house of worship Splendor Oceon request to use component common on the event adoration streaming on September 9 from 10 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That has been put on the agenda by Dennis Florentino. Is anyone rep?
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address for the record.
My name is Dennis Florentino, pastor and overseer of the Splendor of Zion House of Worship.
Okay. Can you explain a little bit about your event? What are you planning to do on September 9?
September 9th, as Christians, we've been called to reach out to our communities and this is scripture in Jeremiah 29, chapter 7, where we've been called to preach and seek for the welfare and peace of their community. And I believe, and this is a great opportunity for us to reach out and bring joy and the hope that we preach and bring a little bit of colorful and joy to the city. After all, we'd all lived here and we love this city and we love these people and the community. So we're looking for your approval, councils.
Okay. Mr. Florentino, are you going to have any speaker, any sound to that event?
Will be praise, dance, and singing. And I believe we're going to have some vending activities and that kind of stuff.
The reason that I'm asking you that is because if you are going to have, which you just say, yes, I want you to put your speaker tour to your group, not to the street. So the people who are there are going to be concentrated, but the people who are not in, they don't get distracted with the noise because that's nothing personal with you or your church. This is being said to everyone who comes in front of us. And the reason why is people who are near there, they call and complain.
Right.
So another question that I have, you have 10 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Is that going to be, is that going to give you enough time to set up and clean after?
I do believe so. I've been part of the activity that's being held down every year, Reynando and El Valle. And pretty much, we kind of know how the ordinance are. We are expecting everything to flow as we expect. We pray for that, you know, be for the better of the city.
Also, Mr. Florentino, we don't allow vehicle parking inside of the park. If you need to load something, you just come park and you just park it on the street.
Understood.
Okay? Counselor, any question?
Yes, I have just a comment. I know that part of your work is also to attract people who may be lost and need spiritual guidance. And they will know that they can get it there. But because it kind of puts a damper on things when the speakers have to be inside because there's not a lot of calling, what I've recommended to other people is if they have flyers left of the event, few people can be in the outskirts of the park, letting them know that this is happening.
Right.
So that would be one way that you can tackle that problem. This way, people will be happy and not calling us because they say, we can't think with the.
No, I appreciate the advice. I definitely do. And we'll do everything in our, in our behalf and in our powers to keep it that way. And hopefully, this won't be the first, this is the first year we as an organization do it. So we are expecting to have a great opportunity to keep doing it. So we don't want to disturb any.
Like the Madam Chair has said, we say this to everybody.
Right.
You know, so, but this is your first time, so don't feel that we're excluding you.
I totally appreciate it.
Yeah. And just to make sure that, you know, if you have loudspeakers, whatever, you have your license from the police department in terms of how many decimals to, and so.
I believe we've gathered certain forms and we've been going through every department, police, the fire department. We want to walk every step and make sure that everything goes.
The Madam Chair has told us that you have all your paperwork.
Yes.
In check. The other thing is that, I'm just going to say this because I don't know if we really got an answer to this. You say you're going to start at 10 a.m. Is that when the event starts? Or is that when you're going to start to set up?
Right. We usually, we believe we might be starting like around 1:00 from 1:00 to 5:00, but from 10:00 is where we put up our equipment, all that kind of stuff.
Because the chair asked that question, but I didn't hear the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I hear a motion?
Motion to send up with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You also need to come back on our next city council meeting, which is going to be June 6 at 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, councils. God bless you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Document 182-17 is Iglesia de Monte de Oración. Request to hold oppression of the word of the Lord on Cronin and Kennedy and Sullivan Park on South Common on June 10th, June 17th, June 24th, and July 1st, July 8th, August 19th, 2017, from 2:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. That has been put on the agenda by Alvaro Guzman.
Good evening and God bless you all. My name is Alvaro Guzman and I represent Church Man of Prayer, Iglesia Monte de Oraciones. It's located in 2 Wyman Street in the city of Lawrence. And the reason why I'm here is because I'm suggesting, I'm asking for some permits for the parks that she just mentioned. And we have been doing this for many years already. There was another representative, but I'm taking over for this year now. And what we're going to be doing is preaching the word of God and reaching to those people in need of a spiritual support, especially the youth with all the delinquency that is going around the city. I think that that's something pretty good for the city in need of these times. What we're going to be doing in the parks is that before we preach, we will be giving flyers and tracts and stuff like that to attract the people to the event. We'll have like about 10 to 15 or maybe 20 shares and space that is convenient for us. And since we have experience doing these events, we know that the speakers have to be set up to only the public that we have for our event, not to the size of the parks, you know, to distract other people. So that's all.
I, I'm just going to ask the same question that I just asked the prior applicants. Are you going to have any speaker?
Yes.
So same recommendation?
Correct.
It needs to be tour to your group, not to the public. So, and the reason that we have to say that is because of the number of complaint that we have received in the past.
Right.
Nothing personal with your church, nothing with your event. This is, this is our responsibility and we have to just let everybody know.
Sure.
So Counselor, do you have any question?
I do.
Counselor Alvarez.
Madam Chair, I see here it's Cronin, Kennedy, Sullivan Parks, South Common.
Yes.
And what I don't know is, are these parks, is it all happening at the same time?
No, no, no. So it's different dates. So.
Different dates.
Yeah, we have like a list saying, for example, June 10th will be in the Cronin Park. I believe the next day will be in a Kennedy and, you know, it will rotate.
Okay, so June 10th be at Cronin.
Yep.
June 17th, Kennedy?
Yes.
And 24.
And 24 also a Kennedy?
It'll be in the Sullivan, I believe.
Sullivan, okay.
And July 1st.
So it's listed?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Because that's what I, I'll say, wait a minute. So you have one, two, three, four parks here.
That did.
And then what happens after July 1st?
So they, we will go back to the Cronin Park and the Kennedy Park.
On July 8th?
July 8th and August 19th.
You be at Cronin Park?
And the Kennedy too.
And Kennedy?
Yes.
At the same time?
So July 8th will be Cronin and August 19th will be Kennedy again.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you. No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other question?
No question.
The motion?
Motion to forward to the full council with a positive recommendation?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You also need to come back on June 6th for our next city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Document 183-17 is a groundwork Lawrence request. Document one eighty-three seventeen is a groundwork Lawrence request to use of Sullivan Park on corner of North Parish Road, Winthrop Avenue for the groundwork farmer market on Saturday from July eighth to October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, from ten AM to three PM. Rose?
Hi, good evening. I'm the Community Engagement Director at Groundwork Lawrence and we've been managing the farmers market since two thousand and six. Uh, we've moved it a couple times throughout that time period to try to accommodate the best spaces. Um, and these two spaces for two different days a market have worked out really well in the past few years.
Okay.
Alright, just, um...
Any question?
Yes, questions?
Counselor Alvarez?
Right. Now, can you explain a little bit, take the opportunity to explain a little bit about the farmers market to those people who are watching from home?
Sure. So we've been managing it since two thousand and six and it's an opportunity to bring in local farms, um, that bring in fresh local produce to our community. Um, since we took it over, we wanted to make sure that it was accessible to everyone in terms of price points and then also accessibility in terms of locations. So that's why we have a weekday market on Wednesdays from ten to three, right across from the senior center on the common, if approved, of course. Um, and then a Saturday one to accommodate those that can't make it during the weekday at Sullivan Park from ten to three. Um, we accept the EBT SNAP benefits, which was formerly known as food stamps. We've also had matching programs to make sure that dollars spent could be matched. So if someone came in and spent five, they got five extra dollars back. Um, so we try to do everything that we can. We work closely with the WIC department to make sure that it's accessible to everyone. Um, while supporting local farms, we also have a half acre farm at Costello Park in South Lawrence where we actually grow food with our youth program. And so that's a job training program, uh, they get paid. And during the summer, they actually grow food and also sell at market. So we're working with local farms that are larger, but also working, um, to really promote urban agriculture right here in the city of Lawrence. And our farm is totally organic, so you're getting fresh local produce that's really healthy and nutritious, um, at a reasonable rate.
Right. So agricultural studies, sounds great.
What was that?
I said it sounds great to have agricultural studies.
Yes.
Available, um, not much of an opportunity in the city to become acquainted with that.
Right.
Um, but many, uh, many immigrants have a background.
Mm-hmm.
Where they came from farming, et cetera.
Exactly.
Right. So, um, I just wanna share that I think this is a fantastic event. I see the way that people gravitate towards it and that's right there in Appleton, in Appleton way, right?
Not anymore. So we actually, we were there. Um, we've tried different locations at different times just to accommodate what'd work best for the community. So we're actually in the North Common, which gives us more space, right across from the senior center. Um, so the seniors love it cause they can walk there. We've got, you know, people who work downtown can walk right there, but it gives us a little more space for all our vendors. Um, and then we engage other people. We have UMass Nutrition Extension Program that does nutrition education right there, um, on site. Sometimes the library arts programs will come out, so it becomes, you know, kind of a nice destination point in addition of the fruits and vegetables. Um, families can come, especially during the summer and have activities that they can do. And the, the common just allows for more space for that.
Right. So people can hang around and do many different things, not just.
Not just buy their produce, which is the main point, but yes, they can do other things.
Right. And I just want, I just wanna share with everyone here and my colleagues that, um, Rose Gonzalez has been an activist for many, many years, who I have, um, really admire. And not only for human rights issues, but environmental issues, which is so important. And, um, looking out for the city as a whole and, and I thank you. Um, you now happen to be working, but it didn't start off that way. You were always a non-paid person who was looking out for the city. So I wanna thank you for that. And before I, I leave the council, I retire, I wanna make sure that, um, I set up a resolution to celebrate your fantastic work. So.
Thank you.
Keep a lookout. I'll be writing to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other question?
No question.
Yes, no? Call the question, uh, the motion?
I move that we send it up with a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
So, June sixth.
She, she has another item that we're gonna take.
Oh, okay.
Document one eighty-four seventeen is also Groundwork Lawrence request to use Camp and Common on the groundwork farmer market on Wednesdays from July fifth to October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, from ten AM to three PM. So.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Rodriguez.
And there is any difference between the, this item and the previous item?
Just location. So we're trying to have one, we have one in north and in south, just to accommodate community need. And one during the weekday and one during the weekend.
Motion to send it to the full council, uh, with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Rose.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Sure to have you here.
Thank you.
So you also need to come back to our next city council meeting, June sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Document one eighty-five seventeen, parking, um, two fifteen-minute parking sign on fifty-eight, fifty-one A Berkeley Street. Um, can I get a motion to take document one eighty-five to Officer Scannell?
Second. I mean, some.
Slow move, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table document one eighty-five.
Slow moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one eighty-seven seventeen is no parking place court both side of the street.
Motion to send it to, uh, to Officer Scannell for review.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table document one eighty-seven.
Second. Slow move.
All's in favor? The ayes have it. Document one eighty-nine seventeen is a resident parking on, at Eight Park Street. That has been put in the agenda by myself. I have, um, quite a few people in the items that they wanna speak on behalf of this item, which I want to give that opportunity to them. Um, however, the other parties are not present. So are we gonna hear what they have to say, but the other one needs to be present? Whoever wanna speak, whoever wanna speak on behalf of.
So before, before, um, they speak, I have a question to you.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Dinora Mykowsky y vivo en la dos cuarenta y cinco de las Yasson. Propietaria de la casa de la, de la dos cuarenta y cinco de las Yasson. A la vez soy educadora y tengo mi negocio ahí.
Yes, you need to, you, yeah.
Okay, her name is Dinora Mykowsky. She lives on two forty-five Jackson Street. Um, she's a provider, educator provider. Um, she has to take care and she's the owner of the two forty-five Jackson Street. Estamos esta noche aquí para, eh, a ver cómo se nos busca una solución en cuanto a los parking, porque he tenido mucho problema en cuanto a eso, tanto de la vivienda como de elarkea, ya que hemos tenido mucho inconveniente porque han pasado problemas que casi mente nos chocan varios niños cruzando la calle porque en la Yasson no se puede parquear, eh, no al parking para eso. Entonces, los clientes que teníamos de, de los niños se parqueaban en la par. Entonces, como pusieron, eh, reside par, entonces nosotros los dejaron afuera. Y la casa mía tiene esquina, la mitad en la Yasson y la mitad en la par. Um, it's too long.
It's not gonna be hard for you. I know that you know the whole story.
Okay, so, um, we live on, um, two forty-five Jackson Street and she was saying that, I'm gonna do a resume of what she said.
Yes.
Um, so we live in two forty-five Jackson Street. So after the light, cause we are in the corner, Park and Jackson. So we have, um, after the light is, um, I don't know how to say this word. It's like, um, like, um, oh my god, ¿cómo se dice? ¿Qué se, eh, wow? Que es como, wait. That we can park there, cause it's, um, it's, um, part of.
Resident parking.
Resident parking.
Resident parking on the Park Street, right? So we are like in the middle of it. So, um, we have, she has been, have problems with that since like two years ago. Cause, um, since they can park on Jackson Street, the, the parents are going to pick up the babies. Sometimes they hire like a hard time to park there. And, um, and then they have received many tickets on the Park Street because, and meanwhile, like in the afternoons, there's no people in there. We actually have some photos to prove. And we actually are here like to see and find a solution, um, of what is happening. Or we want to like the community like find the, um, the urban, um, people that can like search and see like what part we can park, because we don't have like any parking, even though we have garages, but, um, we can let the, those people like park there, you know?
Madam Chair, through you.
Huh? Counselor Rodriguez?
I would like to ask you a question because you're the author of the item.
You wanna ask me a question?
Yes.
Okay.
So the item that we have, one eighty-nine seventeen, is a resident parking at Eight Park Street. So this is a resident parking for one location or it's for the entire block or what's the situation? Can you, because I mean, there's something.
No, it's more than.
And I'm getting started.
Um, thank you, Counselor Rodriguez, but to give me opportunity to explain why I did it this way. Since they've been having issue for more than a year ago, when they called me, um, actually that came, the original petition came from Doctor, I mean, I'm sorry. Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Doctor is alright.
Yeah, Doctor is alright. Um, so, um, we went over the ordinance. It's last, they, they say they live on Jackson Street. Who requested was the person who lives on Eight Park Street. What I'm looking is just to review and try to get to the middle ground, like they say. And we can provide one space in front of the resident of Eight Park Street. Instead of the whole entitled street to have the restriction like they've been asking for.
Right. So, Madam Chair, I also have some thoughts, but.
Counselor Rodriguez has the floor.
After Counselor Rodriguez.
They wanna, they wanna remove.
So right now, the, in Park Street, there is a resident parking.
It's only resident parking, but since they live on Jackson Street, right on the corner, they not allowed to park on that side of the street.
On Park Street?
Yes.
So, and, uh, and the request is to have, to remove the resident parking from Park Street and to own, and have only, uh, resident parking for Eight Park Street. Am I correct?
Yes. Um, actually, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be, um, two documents. It's to review the ordinance, which is just to remove the ordinance. But right now, we are talking, and that's why I expressed before, we even gave you the opportunity, that the resident from Eight Park Street, they not present. So we are talking about, if someone is not present, then she's not gonna have any arguments to provide to us. So the reason that I'm giving them to opportunity is because, um, they here, they wait. But, um, the other piece of the document is not in the agenda and I don't know why.
It, just as a point of information.
Point of information.
When I brought this item forward, it, it was, it's not just, it's, uh, ten, twelve, it's those, those homes there. Right, the whole block. And they all came here.
On Jackson to Berkeley or?
On Berkeley to, to Jackson.
To Jackson. And, and they all came and talked about the problems they were having because people that were parking there were either, were staying there during the night, shooting drugs. Um, they would leave a whole bunch of garbage on the street that the people there had to then pick up because it's, they never seen the streets we were there.
Back then, you guys solve a problem with this ordinance.
Right.
Right now, it's creating an issue for people that are.
Right.
Uh, that go to the business and people that live on the area.
And I think we can solve that too.
Why don't we, I mean, this is, um, this is basic, the problem basically is for the daycare?
Yeah, for the people, the resident that we live here.
Yeah. That live in Jackson Street.
Well, Jackson and Park, cause we are like in the right corner.
But I don't see.
Why don't you guys have stickers for that to park there?
We, we actually, my dad requested and they gave us two tickets to park there, but they didn't work at all, cause they just.
Because what I'm assuming is that when you have resident parking,
Mm-hmm.
you not necessarily need to be, need to live on the street. You can leave a couple of street over and you can park there, I'm, I'm assuming.
No, no, that's incorrect.
Alright, so.
And the police has, they, they give out the permits and they have the street addresses for which is allowed. And that's why I'm saying that maybe we can solve this very easily with the other.
By including.
By including the other people.
A couple of street over.
And then getting, including their address so they could get, and if you're sure that it's them, there are people that are gonna be careful. I mean, these don't look like people that are gonna be doing drugs or having sex there. But because we wanna stop those people that were doing that, cause they see it as a quiet space.
But we're seeing another problem here because she is talking about the people that are going to her business, the daycare.
And that's another, another, and she said if we can have just one parking space, is all she's requesting for that piece, we could, we could make that work too. We just need to have both parties here and officers can, has to be here for that discussion.
Uh, but we also need to put, uh, another item that is gonna allow us to open this window because we are talking about only one space. We're not talking about the whole entitled street. So, um, that is why, uh, if you want, if they wanna leave it just where they had been say, in just the way, and so we create another document and put it on the agenda and then have the opportunity to both be present and just to kind of find a solution. I think that would be the right step to take now.
So you're gonna give us like a permission to park since the.
No, we're not giving them permission to.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is this. Since the other party are not present, we can't do anything. Actually, we don't even supposed to be talking about that, that one specific space. Because as I explained to you in person, you don't live on that street. You live on Jackson Street. However, we wanna work with you. We wanna try to find a middle ground that works not only for you, but also for them.
And we see it, but you see.
And I know, and, and believe me, believe me. When they, when I met, uh, with your mother, like two weeks ago, I know the issue exists. She showed me proof.
Mm-hmm.
I have proof. I also wants to get, uh, the counselor of that district involved. But since nothing we can do at this point tonight, tonight, doesn't mean like we're not gonna do it. We are going to work on this. But like I say, we need to come out with some sort of solution, not only for you, but also for them.
Uh, can I translate that now?
Sure.
Sure, sure, sure.
Ella dice que, eh, ahora mismo yo no paso ninguna solución porque el otro partido de, de lo, de lo que tan afectado no están aquí. Que esta noche no podemos ni ver hablado de esto pero como nosotros estaban aquí pacientemente. Y tuvimos aquí, eh, ellos no, nos dieron la oportunidad para expresar. Eh, no se va a tomar ninguna decisión ahora porque ellos no están aquí pero no quiere decirte que no van a tomar ninguna solución. Y que como quiera, eh, ellos ven la situación, ella habló contigo hace una semana, ella vio la solución, la, el problema y sabe que existe. Y incluso tú le enseñaste evidencia de eso. Y.
Thank you, yeah. No, no, she, what you translated to her, actually she knows. I spoke to her. And, uh, but yeah, but thank you. Thank you for your help. Um.
En cuanto a los parking, haya suficiente parking para los vecinos que son los que están luchando para que nosotros nos parquemos ahí en esa área. Que ellos no la necesitan y Lauren está sobrepoblado de personas y no a donde nosotros estacionarnos, los demás inquilinos que también hay inquilinos.
y no a donde nosotros estacionarnos, los demás inquilinos que también hay inquilino, no tiene a donde estacionarse. Esa área yo tengo fotografía y toda evidencia que amanece sumbrumentamente vacida. Entonces, los inquilinos tienen que ir a dos y tres cuadras ahí a estacionarse cuando no le pertenece. Y estacionarse a dos y tres cuadras de donde están viviendo cuando hay mucho espacio suficiente para nosotros y ellos también, ellos no tienen por qué parar.
Did you translate it?
Yeah. Did you translate that in?
Can you translate that and then?
Okay, so she's saying that, um, we, she has evidence of that top, of the Park Street, the, the neighbors that are arguing for the parking space, they're not really needed. And that um, that, or um, neighbors, they have to walk like four, three blocks or two blocks to park when there already like a space there to park.
Right, I wanna, I wanna respond to that. The reason why we did resident parking there?
La razón porque le dieron residente parking ahí.
Is because all the families that live there on Park Street, they brought pictures. And they show how all the garbage that appears every day that they have to deal with. The people were parking there, and they were doing drugs there, they were having sex there. And they were, you could even see the excuse, but the um, the condoms, used condoms on the street. So that's why they asked for resident parking.
Eh, los, ellos pusieron esa orden porque ellos vieron basura en la calle, incluso estaban vendiendo droga, había, hasta habían condones en el piso, había mucha basura, y por eso ellos pusieron, eh, ellos tuvieron, probaron pruebas-
I have sex, so I-
Eh, probaron prueba de que eso estaba pasando ahí. Sí, en cuanto a eso, si ellos trajeron prueba, tenían también que buscar la prueba de mi área, de mi casa, verdad? Que pertenece también a, a esa calle, entonces nosotros no somos culpables de que vengan homeless y se paren ahí en la calle, incluso mi área todo el tiempo la tengo-
No homeless, persona que estaban, it's that, uh, people that were parking there in a car, then they were doing that. That's why they wanted to stop the parking. But it's not a problem. I think when serious people like you tell her-
Eh, pero ella, ella dice que, eh, sí, cree que no es un problema, pero, pero personas era como ustedes, como nosotros.
Right, and the other group, when-
El otra persona que no-
When you guys get a chance to talk, and we will help the discussion, we could solve this very easily. I see many ways in how it can be solved, Councilor Rodriguez, Council, Estela Reyes too.
... Los vecinos, y al crear una solución para el problema.
Dile que considera, un momento. Eh, yo considero que deberían ir a zoning and planning de Loren's porque geográficamente la casa está ubicada en las dos calles, en tanto en la Park como en la Jackson. Y el equipo de ingenieros y de arquitectos debería estudiar el caso y determinar qué cantidad de parqueo nos corresponde a nosotros porque la casa está ubicada tanto en la Jackson Street como en la Park. Deberán ir zoning and planning.
Thank you, thank you, um, thank you for the clarification, um. Believe me, when I say that we aren't going to be working with that. You're very lucky. The counselor of that district is present here tonight. Once we call the motion and we table, you both need to come back, both party. You and the other resident who lives on Park Street. We are gonna try our best to make this work for both. Because I know the situation, I know. And I've been passing to my colleagues just to work with that. And yes, you're right. We need to work with this, we do. So what I recommend you to do is, we are gonna be calling the, the motion. What we are gonna do, we're gonna table, it's not gonna move, we're not gonna do anything. You sit with her, she's sitting, um, Councilor Ortiz. Can you stand up and you just introduce yourself, so that way um, they know, so that way you can get in touch with them? And then we're gonna make this work? Okay, um, so this is what I think we should do at this point. Just, you know, table, put the other old documents, which is gonna be review, the ordinance. And from there, we're gonna, we're gonna work.
Right, so I, I'd like to make a motion, um, that we send our correspondence, uh, official correspondence to the counselor of District A. Um, but also to the people who are here. And the people from Park Street, we should have all of their addresses and stuff. Cuz they signed a petition and left pictures. Um, we should have it on record, right?
We should.
Yeah, this should be on record. And um, they will send correspondence to them as well. And the next ordinance meeting will be when?
Uh, it's gonna be like three weeks from today.
Mm-hmm. Right, so um, do you have a calendar? I just wanna check. I wanna give the date in the motion. Do you have it, uh, the one?
Uh, what day?
Uh, we're gonna have a June-
June sixth and then after that.
Fifteen.
June fifteen?
June sixth and fifteen.
Okay. So, um, that they be present on June fifteen? I also believe that Counselor Scanlon, I mean Counselor- I'm a doctor.
Your name and address, I can send-
I'm a kimokala. Look, I pass that kid, not, you don't have those. Um, so as I was saying, eh, my motion is that we send out correspondence to all parties. And including Officer Scanlon, he needs to be here. He was the one that um, looked over the area and favored the recommendation for, and gave the recommendation for the resident permit to be approved. So he needs to be here as well.
Second discussion?
Anyone else?
Second with discussion.
Uh, are you, are you saying that they should be here for the fifteen?
For the fifteenth, yes.
Fifteen is the full council, so you might wanna like-
No, no, I was looking for Thursday.
June?
The sixth is the first meeting, and then we're gonna have-
And then that's, the following week-
Fifteen is an ordinance, yes.
Yes, ordinance, the fifteen, right?
It's the fifteen?
Yes.
Yeah. So June fifteen.
June fifteen, yes.
And we, you know, everybody will be here.
We're gonna lay, we, we're gonna notify you. This is not something that is gonna, that's gonna pass, and you're not gonna be present.
It's gonna be official, you get an official letter. Yes.
Seven P M.
Yeah. Okay, and we'll, we'll solve it.
So just, I'm just gonna give a few minutes for um, Counselor Ortiz. I don't know, because your items is gonna be next to be taken?
Yeah, I have somebody here with that.
Okay.
First for the time of course.
Okay. Fair enough.
Somebody put them up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Or voted out, that's my choices for all.
Thank you, thank you.
Once again, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Can I get a motion to table document one eight, uh, what is the document then?
One eighty-nine seventeen. Table it.
So moved.
One eighty-nine seventeen.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to take document one ninety-one, one ninety-one and not, one ninety-two as a block?
So moved.
That we can discuss the three item all in once.
Cuz they belong to the same person?
They belong to the same person and I kinda familiar with.
There's two items on there that doesn't need an, an ordinance for.
Okay, if he, that doesn't need it, so whenever we open up, we can um, discuss. If he's not, then um-
So we got, we, we gotta do one ninety seventeen now?
One ninety, one ninety-one and one ninety-two, and we can um, let the applicants to speak on the all three.
Okay, one ninety, one ninety-one, one ninety-two?
As a block?
Yeah, as a, as a block.
Those three?
Yeah, those three.
Okay.
Uh, motion-
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one ninety is a stop sign of the corner of Swan Street and Berkeley Street. Document, document, uh, doc, document one ninety-one is a protective guard rail on Berkeley Street and fencing Swan Street to protect pedestrian on the property. And document one ninety-two, traffic directional sign of Berkeley Street fencing Swan Street to control traffic directions.
Thank you, my name's Jim Dillon, I'm the administrator at the Berkeley Retirement Home and Nursing Center at the corner of Swan Street and Berkeley Street. And um, I'm here because um, I've been, I've been at the, um, the Berkeley for about six years. And for the last three years, I've had um, three serious accidents where people have not paid any attention to the fact that Swan Street ends and Berkeley Street starts perpendicular.
Right.
And they decided it's better for them to continue to go straight through my wrought iron fence, onto my lawn. And the concern that I have more than my lawn is that in front of the Berkeley Street, we have a pedestrian sidewalk that's used by students that come back and forth to school. My residents come down there and they use the sidewalk. And there are residents uh, all, all along Berkeley Street that use that sidewalk on a regular basis. And um, when vehicles are not paying attention to turning left or turning right, and instead decide to go straight, they go first over the sidewalks before they actually go into my property. And I've got some pictures that I'd like to give to you. This first picture is a picture of, uh, the intersection.
Just pass it and go back and, and then speak on it.
Okay, here you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
We robbed you of your exercise.
The, it's, the first picture is a picture uh, from my vehicle looking at the intersection of Swan Street and Berkeley Street. So you can see that there's nothing, there's nothing at Swan Street or Berkeley Street that would let anybody know that you need to stop.
Oh my god.
You need to turn left, you need to turn right. The pictures that you have are pictures that were left over from a, um, a white SUV that decided to go straight through my property and then do a U-turn, and then take a right and another right and smash into a tree and abandon the car. Fortunately, that individual left the license plate on my front lawn. So we, we identified who, who the individual was.
Miss Reggie?
That's part of the, yeah, part of the fence.
That's part of the fence?
Yes.
That's scary.
So um, what I'm, I'm requesting through my, my counselor is that you, you provide a stop sign at the end of Swan Street. Um, and you also provide a, a barrier across from Swan Street on Berkeley Street with a sign that's on the barrier. That shows people that you've either gotta go left or you either gotta go right, but you can't go straight. And it's, it's, uh, it's something that's gonna be, something that's really necessary because you're, I'm very concerned that people are gonna get killed on the sidewalk. And it's your sidewalk, not my sidewalk, you know? So that's my request. And as I said, this is the third time I've done this. Fortunately, this time I had the license plate. The last two times people went through that fence, they just backed up and left. So I had no, I had no proof of who did what uh, to the property. But it's been an ongoing problem, and I'm hoping that you folks will help me resolve it.
Right, Madam Chair? Councilor Rodriguez.
Which one?
Uh, Rodriguez.
How you doing, sir? Alright, how you doing?
I'm good.
I think that um, you have great points. We definitely need a, an stop sign there on Swan Street, uh, facing up. I take that street every day, I know exactly what you're talking about. That is one of the issues that we're facing in Loren's, that we have no control in those intersections. And people don't know where to stop, or whether, whether there's somebody else have an stop sign or, or the street that we are on have an stop sign. I completely agree with you, we need a stop sign there.
Well, the, the, the problem that we have is that when you come up Swan Street, it's a steep hill. And you really can't see until you get right to the top of Swan Street to know whether the road ends.
Yep, that's why we need to stop, and we need to direct people to stop there. Uh, right now, as, as it is right there, you have no stop sign. So basically, uh, people can keep on going either left or right.
And you can see the hole in the fence across the street.
Yes, well, this is, this is something that we definitely need an ordinance for, for the stop sign. But for the other two items that you have there, the protective guardrail and the traffic direction signs, those are, I don't think we need ordinance for those. What we need to do truly is uh, have the DPW department to, to, to perform a safety study there and, and recommend what is needed. And most likely, those are the two things that they're gonna need to, that they need to do. But they don't, they don't have to do it through, through a city ordinance because those are safety concerns that they can solve in a matter of days once they analyze and identify the problem. But for the stop sign, yes, you need an, you, you need an ordinance for that because you need to go to public hearing and all that stuff.
So the, so what, what's the next step as far as the guardrail is concerned? Do I have my counselor do it?
Me personally, what I will say is that um, once, once the traffic, uh, the safety study's done, they're gonna come up with recommendations. And, and once they come up with those, the recommendation most likely are gonna be that something to stop people to go through your property. And the other one, the most basic one, is signs indicating that people cannot keep going straight. So have to go either right or left.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's common sense. So basically, like I said, for two of your items that you have on the agenda, you, you might don't need an ordinance for that, that can be solved quick enough. It's a matter of requesting the, the guardrail to DPW and see if they have a contractor that is currently doing guardrail in Loren's, which I doubt. But it's, it could be requested. And, or if, if we don't have it, and then have the department doing it, uh, asking for it, or having a contractor doing it. And the other thing is having the directional signs on there, which should be fairly easy to do. I'm pretty sure they have those. Uh, and my question is probably to Counsel Ortiz is that if she, have she request those two, those two specific things through the DPW? And if she have, and haven't get any answer, and then we can proceed with something else.
So you're, you're, you're saying, let me understand, you're saying to me that, that my counselor needs to talk to the DPW?
Probably, or, or maybe we can send recom, maybe we can send a letter to the DPW to analyze the situation there and, and move forward with the stop sign because the stop sign is a different process. But I definitely, like I said, I definitely agree with you in terms of everything that you're requesting. I'm just saying that we probably don't need ordinance to, for two of the items that you're asking, perhaps the sign and the guardrail. Those are two safety features that can be done without having a, a city law.
Yep.
The, and, and I, I, I agree with you with the three features that you're looking for, the three measurements. One need an ordinance, and the other two probably not. Which you could move forward with those uh, fairly quick, once the conversation start.
Okay.
That's my, my thought about, about the whole thing.
Alright.
Okay, Counselor Alvarez.
Thank you. Uh, and I wanna echo some of the words of Counselor Rodriguez. Uh, it would be important to get uh, DPW involved, so that we can get things done sooner rather than later. However, I believe the reason why people come up to us, even though it makes common sense, is to make sure that everybody's on board. Uh, is one of the, of the um, facilitations that we've done here as a committee. I see that an argument we've had frequently with the police department is that if there's a T intersection, that stop signs are not necessary.
Right.
And we, that happened at Juniper Street. And we decided not to take the recommendation of the police department and to add. And then we made sure the ordinance said that there's a stop sign on that street, despite that it's a T. As you're saying yourself, they're going like straight through.
That's a great example.
Yeah, and over there, they're doing rolling stops and causing a lot of, a lot of problems. So, uh, we're gonna, I guess, send this stuff to Officer Scanlon so he can go out there and take a peek and study.
Yep.
But we already know that it is necessary. But we just have to go through the process. And hopefully, by the next ordinance committee meeting, we will be done. We will forward it to the full council with the full knowledge of what's going to be done.
Okay.
It could be, I've seen very easy signage that has arrows going both ways, one going this way, one going that way. That could be put either in a block, sort of cement or something that protects the
Jersey barrier.
Street, right. What's it called? A Jersey barrier? It's called a Jersey barrier?
Oh, really, you really need a guardrail there. Small guardrail.
Right.
Yeah.
A small guardrail, which would even be easier, that has on it
The sign.
The signs.
Yeah, the arrows that go this way.
With the arrows, right.
Not that way.
Right. I still don't know how, how that happens. They must see that there's no more street.
You know why that happened?
Well, I have, I have
And we are actually not telling, telling the people not to stop because there's no stop sign.
But when they have a T session, when they have a T session, this is a common sense.
Right.
It should be a common sense.
It makes you wonder who's driving.
I have, I have video surveillance of the last incident with a SUV, Mercedes SUV, and I turned it over to the police. And when this car got to the top Swan Street, it accelerated to about thirty miles an hour and went right through the fence.
Wow.
It was the most amazing thing to see.
Were you able to speak with that driver?
Hmm?
Were you able to speak with that driver?
No, what happened was the
Because I was, I was wondering what
Whoever was driving did a three sixty and backed out and went down to the end of my property and took a right and smashed the car into a tree and abandoned the car. So
What justifies that behavior?
We don't know who, I don't know who was driving the car. But like I said, I've got the license plate.
Whether they were drunk or what, I mean
I have no idea.
It's just inconceivable.
Yeah, it's, but the most important thing to be concerned about is that these people can kill people on the sidewalk.
Yes.
You know, I can get my fence fixed.
Absolutely. And you see children walking through there. And, yeah, I know what happens. So I'm definitely in favor of the ideas put forward by the colleague. And my two cents is that we will make sure that we put a stop sign there as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Officers Scanlon, we could ask him that this, that he treat this with urgency.
We can actually, through you, Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rodriguez.
We can actually send it to the full council and request a recommendation for the stop sign, which is basically
So happy now the same time?
It's not even needed, we don't even need a recommendation for that, to be honest with you, because it's needed. It's a safety issue.
It's needed, yep.
I'm more than, I'm more than happy to send it to the full council without, with a favorable recommendation.
Yes, I think it makes more sense. Why do we have to delay something down here when you know that the needs exist?
I would like to make a motion to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation for the stop sign, so meaning item one ninety-seven-ten.
Okay.
So wait, so it's
Item one ninety-seven, which is the stop sign.
So the motion, we took it as a block, so he's making a motion only to one ninety?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. The other two, then
Basically the stop sign.
And make sure, though, we need to have the, the recommendation at that time at the full council.
We can move forward without that recommendation because it's needed.
Is this, is this stop sign in?
It's a stop sign on that intersection that we, we really, it's really needed, to be honest with you.
Well, in all my experience, we also have had to hold public hearings on getting a stop sign. We do have to do that. So why don't we, at the same time, we could move this forward? I agree with you.
Yeah, basically what we need to do is
And have him send the recommendation.
But I don't wanna have it as pending the report because the report is gonna say, yes, we need it. I mean
And some people will ask, well, what did the police department say? But I think that if we tell him that we need this for
Right.
There's plenty of time for him to do it from here to June sixth.
And I'll say that, through you, Madam Chair. I'll say something that, that's, this is, this is what the law says. The MUTCD, which is basically the, the rules that regulate traffic mitigations and traffic safety, that's a federal law, indicate that when we have more than three accidents in a year, or five accidents within two years, a traffic control must, must be, must be in place. So on that intersection, for sure, we have a lot more than, than five accidents within the last two years.
Right.
So meaning that we have to control that intersection. The intersection is not controlled by anything right now. So as far as I understand, we, we should move forward with the stop sign and have it done and order a public hearing.
Order the public hearing.
For this. And if the recommendation comes from the police department in the meantime, it's fine. Otherwise, we move forward and put it up.
Right, okay.
So that's a motion, to send it to the full council to order a public hearing.
Also send the document to Officers Scanlon.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. I second, I second the motion, and I would like to, if the author of the motion would amend it to include correspondence to Officer Scanlon, and that his
Yep.
His recommendation will be needed by June sixth.
June sixth.
June sixth is the
Full council.
Well, basically, we're gonna order the public hearings. He can work on it.
Yeah, he have, he have enough time to work because we're not gonna be
Okay. So by June fifteenth then, when is the next?
The full, the second full council meeting is gonna, one, the first one is gonna be on the sixth, and the second one is gonna be on the twenty.
On the twenty.
Twenty.
So by the twenty, you can have
June twenty gives him plenty of time.
I accept that.
Also, if added to that amendment, to make certain that the city clerk, Bill Maloney, will know that we want this public hearing to move forward by the way.
Yes.
Because, you know, sometimes others
I accept that amendment.
Okay, thank you. So correspondence to the city clerk?
Having Officer Scanlon.
That we would like this public hearing, due to the urgency of the matter, to take place June twentieth, you know, after it's been ordered.
Motion has been made, properly second, all's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So we are gonna do with the
For item one ninety-one, through you, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, can we, just to let you know, you don't have to be here next Tuesday.
You don't have to be here for our next city council meeting.
No.
Probably on the twenty.
But the following one, which is June twentieth.
Yes.
Myra can let me know where I'm supposed to go.
I was gonna say that, that Counselor Ortiz was gonna get in contact with you when she let you know when you need to be present.
For item one ninety, one ninety-two seventeen, and one ninety-two, one ninety-one seventeen, one ninety-two seventeen, I truly think that we should send those two items probably to DPW and then, and ask him to, ask the DPW director to perform a traffic or safety study in the area and see, and consider those two, those two recommendations, those two items as a recommendation for a possible solution on the item, on the, on the specific location.
So, Madam Chair, you got the motion? And, okay, the motion
So I second
Had properly second, all's in favor?
So these two items, we'll just get the full council's backing on it and do not require public hearings.
No, this is, those are not required to
Because it's signage.
Those two is gonna stay down here because we're gonna table one ninety-one and one ninety-two. The only one that we had been sent out is OAP, is one ninety. So one ninety-one and one ninety-two, what we are gonna do, we're gonna send recommendation to DPW.
So we're gonna keep it here until
We are gonna table the two documents, one ninety-one and one ninety-two
Until they get it done?
Yeah, until they, until we receive a recommendation from them.
That way, I mean, we could send this up.
Okay.
But we don't need to. This way, if it's here, they'll know that we're paying attention and that we're waiting for them to come back and tell us that it's been done in order to remove them from our agenda.
And, yeah, that's a motion. And before we actually call the motion, I would like to add something to the motion that this is an urgent matter. If the DPW can act upon quick, that would be great.
Okay, so the motion has been made, properly second, all's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table, document one ninety-one seventeen and one ninety-two seventeen.
Tomo?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one ninety-four seventeen is Assembly of Christian Church. Thank you for being here, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you and good night.
One ninety-four seventeen is Assembly of Christian Churches, request to use competent common for evangelistic service on July first and August fifth, from two PM to five PM. The applicant were here. The applicant was here. She has an emergency, as you noticed. It was a lady who was gonna be stepping out.
I know, she was here. I saw her.
So the papers are in order. So can I get a motion to send up with the favorable recommendation?
So move, Madam Chair.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one ninety-five seventeen, permit request for individual who soliciting money on the public way. That has been put on the agenda by our councilor vice president.
Where is, he was here.
He was just here. Yep, he's here.
Oh, there he is. You in disguise?
Now I know why I'm not on the ordinance committee. Crazy. It's been long nights. So the first one, I think, is to deal with the contributions. So the story behind this
The permit requirement.
Pardon me?
The permit.
The permit, right.
Document one ninety-five.
Yeah, so, so this item is put on the agenda very simply. I've noticed, and I think we've all may have noticed, the request for residents around the city for money. It could come from little leagues, it can come from soccer teams, it can come from the fire department with the boot of musk or disney, and it can come from panhandlers, people with cardboard signs saying, give me money, I need money, I need money. So there have been many cities and towns throughout the country that have tried to deal with this issue. And some have been successful and some have not. The unsuccessful folks are the ones that say, we're gonna ban panhandling. Can't have that from happening in the city. And it's failed because once you do that, the, the, the court system have said that the request for money on a public place, if they stay on the sidewalk themselves, is a First Amendment right. Speech equals the request for money. And so whenever, and Lowell tried doing it, they said he can't have panhandling, struck down, and the courts can't have it. So we know where the limits are with respect to what can go through and what can't. And so I thought I'd provide a novel way of dealing with anybody, because you can't focus on one group, so anybody asking for money. And the novel way, I thought, was to essentially say, you would need to have a permit, a permit that costs no money. The ACLU has already made a comment saying that if you decide that you're gonna put any kind of monetary price on a permit, it could be five, ten bucks or whatever, they immediately gonna say you're disqualifying poor people from going ahead and applying for the permit because they don't have the money. So I said, fine, no money for the permit. Anybody can apply for it. But here are the restrictions. The first restriction is, if you counselor wanna work on the intersection of Winthrop Avenue and Chickara, because you find that to be very successful, and you wanna do that, and then you counselor say, you know something, I like what she's doing. I wanna be on that corner as well because she's raking in a lot of money. What happens is that there can be a real conflict about who's there, who should be there, who can't be there. It becomes a public safety issue because you'll have conflicts right there. And we as a government want to avoid conflicts. We want things to be a bit more organized if we can. So we're gonna say to you, counselor, sure, you wanna be ahead and ask for money on that, you can do that no more than three times a week. You gotta identify the location, but you may have that. It's first come, first served. You counselor won't be able to go at the same time, but there are other places. You need to find someplace else, or in a night that that counselor's not doing it, hypothetically, of course. So the idea here is, is you, and it's a question of fairness, because why can't the little, the little league team go to that intersection when somebody's already there? So you wanna space it out a little bit to allow a number of different groups or individuals an opportunity to go to that very profitable intersection. So one, it eliminates the conflict, potential conflict that could erupt, number one. Number two, it also provides for equity, gives people fairness. And let's say you wanna do something, you wanna have Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that intersection, nine AM to five PM in perpetuity. Well, that's kinda crazy. So I say we need to have a little bit of a limit. So let's go three months out. You can't go more than three months out, but then you can come back and you can, if you do it for the next three months, the next three months. But you can't say, I now own this corner because I have this piece of paper here forever. So we have some limits on it. Now, I think we as decision makers can debate, is it three times a week, two times a week, five times a week, we can debate that. We could debate, is three months the right amount of time, six months, a year? We can debate that. So I put this down as I thought made some reasonable sense, that we said, okay, three times a week at one intersection, and the people have to, and three months out. It just made sense to me. So this is the petition, essentially, to see if we can try to get some order, try to provide some equity and fairness, and try to eliminate the potential. Because I've heard horror stories, and you probably have as well, about people really getting physical and confrontational at these places. And it gives the police department, frankly, some tools which they don't have right now to maintain order in these particular areas while giving individuals their freedom of speech. So that's the proposal.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you for being here, Counselor Plant. So have you, have you talked to the city attorney about this and look at the legality of the, of the item?
I have not talked to the city attorney about this specifically. I suspect that we as a council, if you find it to have any kind of merit, we'll send that up to the city attorney at its proper time to have that kind of discussion. But in the research that I have done on that, I feel this is unique, and I did a lot of, I've done some research, I don't mind to say how much, but I've done some.
Because now that you explain it, it make a lot more sense than just what you have here. It's a lot more details on what you just said than the paragraph that we get. It might, it might be there, but I mean, it need more, it need more work. And I truly encourage you to probably put that in writing and submit it as a public record. I'll say that we should be looking into this and see what we can do about it. It's, it's an idea, it may be a good idea for some, it may be a bad idea for others, but it's something that we should consider. And we can definitely take a look at the legality of the, of the situation, of the item, of the, of the ordinance possibly, and see if, if we can move forward or if we can send it to the full council, either with recommendation or no recommendation.
Counselor
Yes, yeah, I think I would, I would like to do more research on this. Are there any other municipalities doing something similar? Do you have any information on that?
No, I don't. So frankly, what I did was I saw what the court decisions were, and I saw where the boundaries were, and I decided to find a way to go ahead and do it. People, after I put this proposal out, have commented to me, said, you know, I've seen something like this happen in such and such a town, or such and such a state, and all that. I thought, frankly, we are within, I thought we were within our, our, our boundaries, within our lanes to be able to head in and do something like that. I have to be very careful on how I present this for obvious reasons. Because if I say to you that this is going to strike panhandling, that is going to be, termed as unlawful. So I can't say that. So I have to be fair across the board for everybody. And I think that we were able to, I was able to somehow find that balance that was fair, that also kept public safety issues also on there. So I feel pretty comfortable with that. I do think there's improvement. I do suggest to you, if you think that there are some recommendations that you would like to put on there
Right.
Please, by all means, put an amendment on there. Please, by all means, put an amendment on there, provide something for it. Uh, but I think in my discussions with people in the community, and the people that I've talked to in the community, I think, um, it's been overwhelmingly positive, uh, because people, um, see the need for some, uh, some order in these locations.
Um, you're saying that you have, you submitted a proposal with your petition for, you submitted a proposal with one ninety-three, with, with that target number?
So I believe what you have before you is, uh,
I have nothing.
I put together, essentially, and again, I, uh, trust me when I tell you this, counselors, I, I, uh, I don't have all the answers, uh, but I, I am offering for you a potential solution. And I am willing to work with this committee and the full council to certainly tweak things in any direction that we think will make it work. And I'd be willing to go ahead, if we can make this thing happen, and send it up to the city attorney's office, get their recommendation on this. And if the city attorney says, you know, after further research, I like this, I like this, but this is really risky, or no one's ever brought this up, or something, at that point, we can have a further discussion as to whether or not a component of that, uh, do we think will pass muster, and maybe it has, and maybe it hasn't. That's my recommendation.
Or, or we would be doing that by way of this committee, the work that we've done in terms of ordinances, um, is to look at draft, some of us drafted, and then send it out to the, um, city attorney, and we most certainly can do that as part of our work here in the ordinance committee. I'm just saying that, um, I would like to know, and I don't know who would do that research for us.
The city attorney?
The city attorney will research, is there other municipalities?
Yeah, he would, he would probably, three of my chair, he probably gonna look into it, uh, see the legality of it, see if other cities and towns have used it, or if this is something that the city of Lawrence gonna put together for the first time ever in history.
It could be, it could be, but the, every, every single time, um, when an ordinance is, when one is presented, people always ask that question, where has it been done before? Um, and it could then, could, does that then prove that is, that is a viable? Okay. See if it's viable. The only thing I'm a little confused about, but you, you probably remember when the baseball leagues would come to the council requesting permits to go before either a store, or, you know, be on a corner somewhere. And we stopped altogether the one where, where they would be in the middle of traffic, because we saw that to be too dangerous for the youngsters. Um, so we always used to make them get permits. I haven't seen that lately, so I thought they came up with this in fundraising, uh, strategies. But they're, you're saying they're still doing that?
So I think under the courts jurisdiction, the courts have said that you can't prohibit anybody from asking for money. I would, uh, so a couple of things. One is, I wanna make this perfectly clear, that if, that if you're a business owner, counselor, and you own a piece of private property, and that an individual goes onto your property, whether it's a store, you own something or other, you want that person off, you may turn that person off, they have no rights to be on that property doing what that, solicit for money outside that property. That could be described as trespassing, that should go to the police department as well. So we're talking about, in this proposal, a public way, a street and intersection, something owned by the municipality or a government.
Right, and I'm saying that in some ways, we may have discriminated against the little leagues, because they were the ones who actually came here for permits.
I recall.
To be able to ask for money, uh, in a street corner.
So I'll ask you to follow the argument that I'm about to say. I, I see less of that myself, although I still think that that could happen and is very real. I think once our youth organizations find out how profitable this is going on, and I think this is becoming known, because if it wasn't profitable, we wouldn't start, we wouldn't be seeing people at these intersections so regularly, but it is very profitable. And now, um, uh, what we need to do, I think, is the city is decide how we're going to engage. Do we want this to continue? Do we feel okay with this? Maybe, maybe my proposal's way off, maybe the committee says, you know something, I really like what's going on in that city. I think they should continue doing what they're doing. And may, and, and that's a prerogative, and it's sort of legitimate. I, on the other hand, I'm concerned about public safety and order, and I would make the argument to you that across the board, not just focusing on little leagues, but across the board, because you cannot focus on any one specific group, you cannot. So it has to be across.
No, I'm just saying that we did put, um, stricter, um, stricter limits on a little league, which is something positive, right? Um, and we were not doing that with panhandlers or other people who have to come up with a different story, because the story of, I lost my wallet and I need money to get back home. Um, and then you see that same person, didn't you go home yet?
I don't think the courts are gonna change their opinion, as when you're asking for money, you're asking for money. But I mean, but, but I, but I, but I will lean to you on this. I could be way off on this. I could be, I've been off on many things in my life, and this could be another one to add to the list. But I would recommend the following, I would recommend, if you really have some concerns, before you move it on, uh, get the expert opinion from the city attorney. I do think that, I do think that the people that I represent, I can't speak for the folks that you represent, people that I represent know very full, uh, are very supportive of this, and are applauding the fact that we're taking some initiative. As far as the end product concern, I leave that to you a little bit, I'd be happy to work with you with what the end product is, but that's a, that's a concern.
So, um, I think we should be sending it, uh, to the city attorney. Let him look at what you've put together, and, um, we have this electronically, it will send to us. Okay, um, and then take it from there, then present it to other people, hold a public hearing, see how people feel about it. And, um, it, it just as a footnote, the people you represent, I represent them too. So as a, at large counselor, I'm concerned with everyone, and I'm, and I'm always strive to strike a balance.
I understand that, but I don't represent, I only represent a subsection of who you represent.
Yes.
So I can't speak for the entire city, I can only speak for F.
So I would love to hear the public.
No, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And before we call the motion, I just want to add that, um, I am definitely want to be part of this. I wanna work with you. Um, I have received a lot of, you know, phone calls complaining about what we can do, what we should do, and what needs to be done. I understand, and nothing too against the people who are soliciting money, nothing too against them. But we all know that when any person has any condition, whether there is disability, any condition, you name it, they have help, they have aids, they have departments who they can work and help. The problem is that they're not willing to accept and follow the rules at the shelters and all the places. If we go under the bridge, and nothing too against those people, right? But we need to come out with something, and it's like you say, if it's your pro, if your private property, you might wanna find a solution and stop that being. So this is our city, we need to work. So, and, and like you say, you know, we need to hear what the public have to say about that, but a lot of, of my constitution has complained about me, and every, every day, it's a different location, different ones. It's like, it's all over, it's a citywide, it's all over the place. And people doesn't feel safe like they used to, because those peoples not even belong to Lawrence. They not, I mean, not belong, they don't live in Lawrence, they not from Lawrence, I should say. So, uh, yes, so whatever you think I can be help with, I wanna be working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Madam Chair, I appreciate it.
So the motion is to send it, Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes. So, um, yeah, so the motion was made. Motion to send it to the city attorney to review the legality of possible, um, all said, to get the legal, uh, the legal opinion on this item.
On the proposal.
On the proposal, and, uh,
Submitted by?
And to look into, uh, probably other municipalities that have, uh, similar, um, ordinance like this.
Yeah, not limited to the state.
Motion?
Not limited to the state.
No, not limited.
Not limited to the state.
Not limited to the state, 'cause, you know, who knows, maybe somewhere in New York State, there might be people doing that, but you see.
So Maria, you got all that? Motion has been made properly second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, um, Counselor Plant, to be taking a step four in this, um, and like I say.
I have two more items on the agenda, can I take those up as well?
Can I get a motion to take document two hundred seventeen out of table?
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have it.
Which one is that, Madam Chair?
The first one. Resolution?
Two hundred, the resolutions.
Resolutions for the high schools, so yes, so thank you so much. So, um, uh, we do this every year, and, and we're doing it right. It's been a while, I read in our ru, rulebooks that we need to send any resolutions to the committee, and the committee sends it up. So, I, I do this, we do this every year, we, we provide resolutions to the top achievers, so all of the high schools within Lawrence High School. We also do it to Krista Ray, Notre Dame Krista Ray High School, Central Catholic High School, Great Lawrence Technical High School. And because Northern Essex is in our city as well, a, uh, we do a, uh, the, the top ranked graduate from Northern Essex. So, it just gives us a chance to acknowledge and re, recognize the top achiever from each one of those schools here before the city council on the resolutions. I am getting those names, I hope we can move this up with a favorable recommendation. My hope is that we will do it in three successive weekends, the first one starting the, of the week of the sixth. Then a couple, we have our special budget committee would do a couple then, and the third would be, uh, the week after that, which is the twentieth, I think. So, sixth, thirteenth, twenty, but if you send it all up, that would be great. Thank you.
Let me make a motion to send to the full council, what have a recommendation?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one ninety-six seventeen is a dedication recognizing ultimate sacrifice given by E V T Frank Alenno Square to the intersection of Concord and Franklin Street. Counselor Plant?
Thank you, and first of all, I do wanna thank Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez for cosponsoring this measure with me. Uh, this is actually in his district, and, uh, Frank Elecno was a Laurentian who actually lived at seventy-five Concord Street, seventy-five, don't look it on a map, you won't find it, it's no longer there. Uh, but the story behind Frank Elecno, he was a World War One veteran. He was one of the guys that I saw, uh, who I provided a flag to when he went, uh, to France in my most recent travels. And again, thanks to all of you for your support on that.
So he was killed?
So, his brief story, and I put it on Facebook, this will take me literally less than one minute to read. He was a mill operator at the Duck Mill before enlisted in the army on July sixth nineteen seventeen. He was assigned to Company B, uh, Infantry, uh, the twenty-third Infantry Regiment of the Second Division, was shipped off to France on September seventh nineteen seventeen. He was one of only seven Lawrence soldiers who received the Distinguished Service Cross as the second highest Army medallion. Uh, he was originally from Russia and moved and immigrated to our city, into our country, into our city. Uh, he won the Distinguished Service Cross for, quote, extraordinary heroism, unquote, uh, during the World War One, or the Great War. There was a, a battle in this farm in the middle of France on April twenty-first nineteen eighteen. Uh, he was in a three-man patrol, he was attacked by, uh, seven, uh, German soldiers. Um, the, from the official records, and this is in quotes, although fatally wounded, he continued fighting until the hostile patrol was driven back, and the officers commanding it with a non-commissioned officer was killed. Although mortally wounded, he carried a message for assistance to a point two hundred yards away. What he was able to receive from those, from these officers were valuable papers and information. Uh, they were retrieved from the Germans that were killed in the combat, and they greatly assisted the Allies in that particular time in the war. Uh, there are only two soldiers right now that are buried in France from World War One that received the Distinguished Service Cross. So seven in Lawrence total, two of them, uh, are still in France. The other guy's last name was Clabby, Sergeant John Clabby. So anyway, um, I, he was, when he died, he was fighting for the United States, while also a Russian citizen. By the way, as a side note, not uncommon, we had a lot of individuals who were not U S. citizens, who fought for our country during that war. Um, and there were a lot of first generations, uh, residents who fought in that war and made, in this particular case, the ultimate sacrifice with great distinction. Again, the second highest Army Commendation Medal you could possibly receive at that time. So anyway, thank you, Counselor Rodriguez, I appreciate your support on this. And the point that we're looking for, I have it on that sheet there, I think it's on the intersection, if you help me out, intersection of, was it Valley and, pardon me?
Oh, the, the other one?
Concord and.
Concord and.
Franklin Street.
And that's, I think, the closest point to where he actually lived.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is?
Um, I guess, a motion to send it up with a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Second, the motion.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
I don't think we need a public hearing for this.
No. I don't think so. We did other ones.
Yes, yeah, we did. Document two oh one seventeen is a modified street sweeping ordinance to include a more comprehensive list of the street. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes, um, this is an item that I put together, I put on the agenda because, um, we, because of the fact that we've been doing more cleaning with the sweepers, uh, parking has been an issue in, throughout the city, and we would like to, uh, basically, this ordinance only include some of the downtown street, uh, and some of the main street in the city, and, uh, I truly believe that we should do it for the entire city. So basically, what I, what I'm looking for with this, with this, uh, ordinance, or modifying the ordinance, is that we have a comprehensive list of, uh, a street and road, and, uh, and so far, so want to actually, uh, restrict uh, probably parking, or the best solution for the, for that, uh, specific task that the DPW is currently doing throughout the city. So, with that said, I would like to, um, um, make a motion to send it to the DPW, send correspondence to the DPW, uh, to, for them to work on this, and, uh, and probably, uh, recommend something to this committee in terms of how they're gonna be able to modify it, modify that, and how are they gonna be able to do that work appropriately.
Second, uh, just quickly.
Second with discussion, Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes, discussion, um, you might need to assist in the composition of that letter.
Yes.
Okay, because it's, uh, very complex, the way that, that it was set, and we wanna make sure that.
Right.
Yeah, I've been talking to the DPW director in terms of how we should read.
So if you could talk with Teresa about what should be in that letter?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Um, so the motion is to send a correspondent to DPW. Okay, motion has been made properly second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table, document two oh one.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document two oh two with a parking on Oxford Street, twenty minutes parking, chocolate and markets, and that has been put on the agenda by Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes, three of my chair.
Oh, sorry.
Three of my chair, I just wanna clarify on the item that it was supposed to be ninety-eight Oxford Street, twenty minutes parking on that location, or any location that, um, the police department, uh, recommend.
Ninety-eight?
And, um, with that said, I would like to make a motion to send it to Officer Scott.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Did you say ninety-eight?
Take the notice of ninety-eight Oxford?
Ninety-eight?
Eight, Oxford.
Yep.
Oh, it's ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Yeah, they left it without.
Okay, so a motion to table document.
Right.
Second. Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Um, Maria, I have a question.
Officer Flores.
Do we ta, do we, uh, table document one ninety-five? Can I get a motion to take document, to table? Document one ninety-five seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Last but not least.
I'm sorry.
Last but not least, I'm sorry.
That is okay.
Um, I did try my best, but it didn't work out. Document two oh seven seventeen, taxing ordinance amendments, section five point forty-eight point nine thirty, authorization to arrest and seizure evidence, um, that has been put on the agenda by Officers Jose Flores.
Good evening, Counselors. This already went up to, um, the city attorney, and it's, uh, he sent it back down to the, uh, council for approval. Um, actually, the first one is, uh, five point four eight zero one zero, which is, uh, omitting section six.
Just have it.
I'm just looking for the.
Okay, I have it.
Do you have that one? Should be the first page.
So five forty-eight, old ten?
Five.
Zero ten.
Five.
What I'm looking at is, uh, number six, says operate from a base with a two-way communication. It's not needed for a delivery service. So, uh, requesting that that be omitted.
So.
Question, three, Madam Chair. So basically, number six doesn't apply to?
To delivery service.
To deliveries.
Because it's all contracts.
It's all contracts. So basically, what you're talking about is the radio click-click?
Yes, and that, that was there before, because the, uh, taxi cab companies, when they first started, they had delivery service.
Okay.
They're no longer allowed to have a delivery service.
So basically, just to remove that, I'll say something related to, oh, it's not needed, this item is not needed on the delivery services.
Correct.
So that's not here?
You want to do an?
It, it is. If you look at it.
I'm sorry.
And inserting in its place, intentionally omitted?
Okay, four? Intentionally omitted, four?
Yeah, it'll be just out. That'll be taken out.
Oh, really?
Okay.
That item.
So basically, uh, five forty-eight, ten.
Instead of eleven items, it's gonna be ten.
So what I'm saying is, uh, five forty-eight, ten.
Mm-hmm.
Actually deal with deliveries?
No, five, five, that would, that deals with delivery.
Okay, no problem. So on the section six, and then say, no need.
That's, it's not needed.
No problem, all right.
All right. So you got it, Counselor?
Yes.
This is, this is the one that he was operated from a base with two-way communications.
Okay, that's gonna be the change there?
That's the change, yeah.
So basically, no need for that, for deliveries?
No, no needs for delivery.
Okay.
And, just give a few.
Right, this is only for?
It's only for livery.
For livery.
For liveries.
Mm-hmm.
This item that says, and inserting in its place, instead of following new section, authorization to arrest and seize evidence?
Yes, that's, that would, that's already there, but what I am looking in, omitting that one, and putting in its place is, uh, this was back in two thousand thirteen. It was, for some reason, that, it's, a section of it was taken out.
Okay.
And, um, it plays a big role in enforcement. And, um, I basically asked the, uh, city attorney to have it, uh, uh, placed back into, uh, the, uh, section. Which is these, the section that was, um, taken out, was, um, I'll read that portion, which is, "However, nothing herein shall be construed as prohibiting a driver of a taxi cab or delivery license outside the city of Lawrence from driving through Lawrence or from accepting within the city of Lawrence. A passenger, passengers, packages, or other merchandise is summoned by or at the request of said passenger or client by telephone or by radio dispatch from the owner's or operator's principal place of business outside of city, provided the name, pickup, address, and destination of said passenger, passengers, packages, merchandise, or clients is immediately supplied by the driver or any inquiring police officer."
Right.
So this get, this, this is, this is the right that, um, Commerce has. Anyone, you can call any service you want, any, any taxi company to come pick you up here. The only thing this gives me is that, once they're completed, they're serviced, they have to leave the city.
When they complete the city, they, they have to leave the city.
Yes, they have to leave the city.
The, the, someone from the outside?
Yes.
Coming in from the outside.
Once the service is completed, they must leave.
Right. So is, is that, um, the authorization to arrest and seize evidence?
This, 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 it's, it was always there.
Right.
That, that part has not changed at all.
So let's say, when I, when I read that, I know what you told me about outside, um, taxis actively sent away?
It would actually give me the, um, enforcement to seize the vehicle if they're trying to operate a service in the city.
Okay. All right, good.
Authorized taxi service.
So if you seen them several times, because I know you got, you know, your eyes out there.
Mm-hmm.
Then, okay, I think that's proper. The other thing, though, I have constituents that have called me and, um, have called the police department, where they complain that they know that taxis are stopping and picking up drugs and then leaving, taking it to another. So they're serving as?
We've, um.
Drug mules.
We've, actually, we've had a few arrests.
Okay.
With, with that.
Would this, would this help you more, to be able to do more of that?
Using taxis and livery service.
Wow.
As transportation. So there, there have been a couple arrests on those, and those drivers do lose their license.
Right. Um, and I like also that you have put in your emphasis on substance abusers, because I have gotten complaints of people who smell of marijuana. You know, I don't care, people wanna smoke it in the privacy of their own home, that's up to them. You know, people, adults, I'm talking about adults, not children, can do whatever they want with their lives. But when they're driving, it's not just their lives, it's also the lives of those passengers.
Right.
And God forbid, anybody in the street. So.
There is a section in the ordinance that covers that.
Right. Does it put more, uh, does it intensify it? Does it give you more of a bite?
Well, I have no problem with that.
To deal with that?
Yeah. I haven't had any problems with that yet. The only problem we were having, well, I was getting complaints about, uh, transporting liquor.
Liquor.
Using the taxis as transportation, and that, and that was changed the last, um, on the last council, uh, that we had, the meeting, last meeting, which was approved, transportation of liquor.
So it does not allow now liquor to be transported?
You weren't, you weren't here?
No, I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that was, that was inserted in the, uh, on a new proposal, the transport of alcohol beverage.
I think that's excellent. You know, and, and also, you know, people going to New Hampshire and buying out of the state when we know they need to have, they have to be buying their liquor here in the state. And it might be cheaper, but unfortunately, they chose to have a business here in Massachusetts, and we count on those taxes, on the taxes of those beverages, um, for services. So I, 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 I like it. I, I wanna thank you. I know you spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, I thank, also, I'll thank him personally, the city attorney, for working with you on this. But, um, I'm glad that, that you're looking at ways to overcome some of the problems that people have brought to us regarding the taxis. And, um, and even the, the whole business with making sure you have more authority, um, absolutely, to get rid of cabs that are from the outside, that have completed their business here, there's no need for them to pick up anyone from here unless, of course, there was a phone call and, and.
Unless there was.
Know what I mean?
Remember, let's get three more. Yes.
And by the way, they, uh, if they receive the phone call while they are here in Lawrence, they're supposed to get out and then come back, right?
Yeah, they're not a, they're not a taxi service in the city. So once you're complete, you're, you're fair, you must leave.
I'd like to make a motion to send this, um, this item to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Absolutely, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, this is Florin.
We have to order a public hearing?
We also need to order a public hearing for that.
Yeah, motion to send it to a full council, we want a public hearing, by the way.
Yeah, we'll order the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's gonna be on the June twentieth. We're gonna order two pub, uh, the, the, the public hearing is gonna be ordering on the June sixth. It's coming back two weeks after, which is gonna be June twentieth.
Okay, hopefully, but if it, if it doesn't, we'll let you know, 'cause sometimes the court doesn't get all of the items out on, you know, one time.
Counselor, before we take any item, um, I have minutes to approve. Uh, can I get a motion to, to approve minute of the, uh, meeting of May eleventh?
So moved. Second discussion?
Second with discussion.
Yeah, um, I was not present.
Right.
But I will vote, because that's the only way we can get these on record.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Alvarez. Motion has been made, properly second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Counselor, is any items that you need to take out of table item, we need to take, let me just advise you before we take this. Um, I know this late, and, uh, but we have to start taking and withdrawal all this table item that has been put in from two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen. So I want, I recommend you, or I encourage you, just to go through, and if there's any item that you might thinking for our next meeting, because I'm gonna start.
I'll come prepare.
Yep, come prepare, because I'm gonna be taking for withdrawal all the, you know, all the table items that has been sitting here for more than, uh.
This already been done.
Those are already being done, Leslie.
This May fifth?
Yep, that's, that's me, that's me.
It was cinco de mayo.
So is any table item that you need to take it?
We have, uh, some recommendations.
No, there was, just some questions.
Recommendation, because, um, I think it was, I think those are all, they has been approved.
Yeah, I think that they're all.
She put me a note here, like it has been approved on the five, six. I don't know what, and, um, I remember some of them. But before I do what we did the last time, I want to check with her to make sure, because, um, she did mention something that has been approved, but she also leave me a note here. So I'll check with her, and if there's anything, I'm just gonna leave it on the side, but I recognize some of the one that we had already approved.
Now, I know Modesto wanted, um, thought that.
Like the handicapped away in Grove Street, it has been approved on our last meeting, so this is all.
Yeah.
So, can I?
So he had some, they still have it on our agenda, even though it went up?
What?
That one, what you were saying?
No, this is, she just gave it up for record, and she put it over there, but she also put a note here, it has been approved. Yeah.
So it was approved before King's List?
No.
No.
We, no, no, she.
He actually took action on those before.
It was after, yes, it has been approved.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Counselor.
Did you call Chris?